Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. And I'd like to welcome everybody to our first meeting in the new Monroe Township High School. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
This is Cole Poniewich.
Here.
Mr. Chirella.
Here.
Mrs. Antelis.
Here.
Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Mr. Masters.
Here.
Mr. Tesler.
Here.
Mrs. Ferroni.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a question.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted September 2nd, 2011, 1 at all schools, 2 home news Tribune, 3 Cranberry Press, and 4 filed with the Clerk of the municipality. This time we will go to number 5 on the agenda, the public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Oh, I don't know. I'm sorry. I'm just going to talk and if I can't, you'll just tell me to sit down. My name is Suzanne Eisenberg. I live at 12 Trial Boulevard. Child X was missing from band practice last week. Where were you on Tuesday night, her friend wrote on her Facebook wall? Her response, "Family emergency." The next day, child X sends an email to the band director to please excuse her absences from band practices. Hurricane Irene destroyed her home and everything in it, including her flute, her marching dots, and her uniform shoes. Out of all the devastation that occurred to her family, her passion of marching in the band was her concern, and now at risk. The band students with their families are working diligently to replace her flute so that she can continue participating in marching band. Family B, right here on Schoolhouse Road, had to quickly evacuate their house due to the quick rising waters of the brook due to the storm. When I spoke to the owner, I asked what she needed help with. Her response was, "I'm okay. The football team is coming over to help me lift the heavy items out of my house." A few days later, she asked me for help. I called the rec center, who came to her rescue, the soccer team. Why am I telling you this? Because these children are parts of different teams, not only on the field but off the field as well. Their hard work, through their hard work, they bring people together, whether it's a soccer field, a football field, or an instrument in their hearts. These children have already started their fair share of paying to play. So I ask you to reconsider opening up the voting again, or ask to reconsider pay to play. These children have already done enough. Their families have done enough. We are a community. We're a village. We're a town. We're a people. And these children have already shown that they can pull together and help one another. So I ask that you reconsider that. Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Eisenberg, and I live on 12 Trial Boulevard. I am a sophomore student in the school who plays in the band. You might have heard me play last night at the ribbon-cutting ceremony. I feel so lucky to have parents who support me in every way they possibly can. They're always at the football games and at competitions to hear me play. My mom is at the Music Parent Association and was with me every day at band camp. My parents say they will pay for me to play because they don't want me to stop from doing what I love. However, there are probably many children out there who are going to be forced to stop doing what they love. You hold the power in your hands of allowing these children to continue what they love doing. Please consider revoking pay-to-play.
Anyone else?
Hi. My name's Jeff Campenaro. I'm from 4 Mulberry Court, Monroe. I have two children in the high school, one in the junior high. This pay-to-play is a problem in a lot of respects. Not being involved in sports or other activities puts these kids back on the street. I grew up in a really bad neighborhood, and I know what I'm talking about. I grew up in Newark, New Jersey. When I went to school, we just went to school, and you got involved. Everybody was involved in sports, stayed out of trouble. Involved in clubs, they were out of trouble. You're going to have a lot of kids that are going to be out on the street that are not going to be doing what they were supposed to be doing after school. You really need to reconsider this. This is just another tax on this town. We pay enough taxes. You know, try to help out the people that need the help. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Michelle?
Michelle Arminio-9, Nathaniel Street. I would also like to echo what the other two people have said. I think these children deserve every opportunity to join sports and to have it taken care of. $165,000 on a $110 million budget seems a really, really small amount of money for you to find. You seem to find money after we get terrified that the budgets are not going to go through and there's not going to be enough money, and all of a sudden after that, there's plenty of money that comes by. So find $165,000 for these kids. They deserve it. And the kind of kids that went out and helped the people in the hurricane should be applauded. It was heartwarming to see people come out and help the community. So those are our community kids. They deserve it. Okay. What I'm asking is, the last week's closed session, did that resolution get, did that subject get resolved? It was a personnel item.
Um, no. We're still in that process.
You haven't resolved that situation?
No.
Okay. When do you think that will be resolved, and we will hear the results of that?
Possibly tonight, possibly another meeting after that.
Are you having another closed session?
Yes, we have.
What else is on the closed session?
I believe that's the only item, is the superintendent's evaluation.
Okay. So you'll read that resolution out again before you go into closed session?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Then we will close the...
Hi. My name is Debbie Nadio. I reside at 6 Laurelley Way. I have a question. We did get the extra money. What are we doing with it? Putting it in our personal piggy banks? We are the taxpayers here, okay? You are elected officials to serve our best interest for our children. I want to compliment Ken, I'm going to mess your name up, Luke Kaufman, and Mr. Masters. When you gave your reason, I saw it on the TV, for taking pay-to-play, take it out. You gave a reason. You gave a legitimate reason. Whether you liked their answers or not, they gave a reason, legitimate reason, as far as people that wanted to keep the pay-to-play in. Some of their answers were, "I budgeted." You've got a budget. That's not an answer. Our kids deserve more. They have shown us that they are responsible, the coaches enforce these kids to be better students. Colleges look for well-rounded children, not for kids who just do academically well. They want kids to be social. I'm so upset that this was even thought about when extra money came into our hands. What do you have intentions of doing with this extra money? It's there. It's there for the children, not for anything else but the children. So please, I'm asking you, we are taxpayers, we are the voters who elected all of you into office because you are going to be, you're going to take into consideration our best interest for our children. And I really only saw three or four of you that took in consideration the best interest for our children and this community. These kids deserve an opportunity to try different sports, whether they're good or not, whether they're going to change sports, change different clubs, they have a right. That is their right. Don't make us choose to pull our kids out. Thank you.
I know the money was, we got extra money from the state back in July, and at that time, the board voted on what to do with that extra money. And I'm going to have Mr. Gorski explain how much we received and where it went.
Thank you. We recently received an additional state aid award of $887,000 approximately, which the board debated and decided to reinstate zero-period transportation for approximately $250,000 as a 2011-2012 budget item. A new science initiative at the elementary schools was also appropriated for approximately $400,000. I'll be brief. And the remainder, about $230,000, was appropriated for tax relief in the 2012-2013 budget. This request and revised budget was sent to the county, and we are still waiting county executive superintendent approval.
Is there any other comments from the public? Seeing no one, we will close the public forum. And at this time, we will go to number 6 on the agenda, Champions... I'll open public forum back.
I didn't know it was coming. My name is Lena Sally. Lena Sally, 23 Drexel Terrace. I actually didn't even know it was coming tonight because I didn't know the meeting was tonight on the website. I couldn't find it. Today, my daughter calls me at 20 after 2:00. She missed her bus. She was supposed to be staying after her cheerleading practice, which got canceled because the outdoor sports had to come indoors, and they were never told that their practice, which was supposed to be indoors, was canceled. So I had to come up here and pick her up, which on Wednesdays, thank God I don't work because I was able to come and get her, and she didn't have to sit here for almost two hours. I think there's going to be a problem. I don't have, if we have to pay-to-play, I will do that, but I think there's no room for these girls to practice in this school. Once November comes, it's a competition team, there's 35 girls, that's $3,500. Their, last year and the year before, they bussed them over to the rec center, and from what I understand today, the athletic director made a statement that he didn't know whether the money was going to be there for busing, to bus the girls over there, if there's no room for them to practice in this high school. They are a sport. Whether people in this school think they are or not, they are a sport. And I just, I think that there's going to be problems this year. And if we're paying that money, if I have to pay the money, I will pay it. But I also don't want anything cut from what they had last year, if they're paying $3,500 to do this. I don't think that's fair. That's all.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adriana Becunia. I live at 13 Bay Hill Boulevard. And I had a question. What exactly is considered a sport or a club? That has never been made clear. I know that it was voted by the Supreme Court that, example, cheerleading is not a sport. It's a club. So is there anywhere where it's defined what are the clubs and what are the sports? Because I don't think that's been made clear to the public, to the parents, or to the kids. Not that it matters, I mean, obviously, you know, if this is going to be enforced, it has to be paid. The children that can afford it will afford it, the kids that can't, like it was stated before, a lot of them aren't going to be in the streets, and they're not going to be participating. So was this ever addressed?
Yes. I'll have Mr. Gorski answer.
There is a recently created policy that addresses the differentiation between the sports and the clubs. All sports are included in the $100 fee without exemption. Marching band is also considered a sport, subject to the $100 fee. Clubs, however, are a little different. Those clubs that have a curriculum content or address social, the well-being of students are exempt. Also, those clubs where someone is nominated, such as National Honor Society, are exempt. There is an extra flyer attachment that was part of the policy that defines all of the clubs throughout the district, both high school and middle school, which ones are subject to the $25 fee and which ones are exempt. There's a great deal of ones that are exempt. All of the sports are non-exempt, and they are $100. If, however, and I want to make this clear because it's an important point, if any child is displaced or homeless, or financially impaired by the hurricane, their fee is exempt. And if any child is on free or reduced lunch, their fees are exempt. And if any child wishes to solicit exemption for any other reason, they could appeal to the superintendent of schools as per the policy and seek exemption.
Okay. So going back to the example of cheerleading, so if it was stated that it is not a sport, who made the decision that that is a sport, within the district, or?
Or banned.
Or banned? If that's, if, you know, you have all these other districts and all of these, all these different school districts that don't consider it a sport, or the Supreme Court not considering cheerleading to be a sport. Who made that decision in our district?
Oh, I know. I know that cheerleading in Monroe has always been considered a sport. And that...
The marching band, the marching band in particular, and cheerleading, closer aligned to sporting because of the costs involved, and the coaching, and so on.
Okay. So...
If the fee was, again, designed to help offset some of the costs so that some of these clubs, particularly the ones that were added later, would not have to be considered to be cut with the budget.
Okay. So then, if it's going to be to offset the transportation because they go to different schools, then it shouldn't be a pay-to-play. It should be to cover their fees for busing, okay? JV, for example, don't travel. They have four games, five games in the year, they don't do anything but cheer within the school grounds. Why are they going to be charged $100?
Well, I mentioned this to another parent that had called and inquired about specific cost accounting to each club compared to another club. Why would this one, which is so much equipment-intensive, be the same price as another one? And this was all designed in aggregate to help support the whole program as a whole, and all the costs were considered together for the purpose of coming up with the fee.
And actually, pay to participate has been something that the board has been discussing in committee and in board meetings back in February and March, before there was any, before the budget, because this was part of the budget. So this is something that the public has always been invited to our board meetings and our committee meetings. It's not been closed. It's always been open, and we've discussed this for many months. So there was a lot of discussion that went into the decision as to what we wanted to include, what we didn't want to include. And I know there is a list, and if the list is not on the website, we'll make sure that that list gets up on the website.
I understand what Mr. Gorski was saying, that the fees are to offset, and so it could be evened out, but it still doesn't answer the question. If you have a team, or the JV team that is not traveling, they should not be in the same amount, they should not pay the same amount that the teams that are traveling, like Varsity, or the competition team, for cheerleaders. It makes no sense.
Well, the transportation is one component. You still have the insurance, you still have the field maintenance, you still have all of the equipment, you still have the stipend and the related costs for the instructors. You know, that's just one piece that you're pulling out. And yes, you know, a specific cost accounting for each particular sporting event could have been done, and we could have had a differentiated price for every single one, but I believe that would have just confused it matter even more, and not have really created any big disparity in prices.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Cole Poniewich.
Mr. Leary, we're in public forum.
Okay.
If there is no more public, I will close it, and we will go on to number 6, Champions of Education.
This is Cole Poniewich. May I make a comment?
No. We're going to hold off your comments until other board business.
Fine. Good evening, members of the public, members of the Board of Education. I am honored this evening to be able to present a Champions of Education Award. Last night, we had the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the opening of our new high school, and it was very well done. And there is just so much behind-the-scenes work that goes into preparing for the opening of a school district under normal circumstances. This year in particular, we were challenged by some extraordinary circumstances and logistical items that had to be accomplished within a very short period of time. So while there's been a lot of focus on the opening of the high school, there has been a lot of other things that have been going on to make today possible, including the transition of our 6th graders out of the elementary schools into the middle school, the move of Apple Garth into the old high school, the high school into the new facility, the dismantling of our trailers, the regular cleaning and maintenance of our buildings, all the things that generally occur over the summer will multiply tenfold, and I think it only fitting that we acknowledge and recognize Jerry Tagg for his incredible contribution to make that happen. I shared last night, and not to be redundant, but last night I spoke about the amount of stress that the administrative team has been under this summer, and how I was particularly vexed by the inordinate amount of work that needed to be done. And each time I went to Jerry Tagg, he said, "Ken, don't worry about it. It'll get done," until we reached the point where I was finally asked to stop coming into the buildings. And so this evening, I want to publicly acknowledge Jerry's calm, professional, and reassuring demeanor throughout this entire process. And on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to present this plaque, presented to Jerry Tagg as a Monroe Township Public School Champion of Education for exemplary service in providing leadership during the construction of the new high school and district reconfiguration. Your efforts are appreciated. And this is from Superintendent of Schools, myself, and Kathy Cole Poniewich, the Board of Education President. Jerry?
He's allowed back in the school.
I just want to add to that, and I know I said something last night about, under Jerry's leadership, and he doesn't ever ask for anything, and he comes in here every day, and he's got this smile on his face, and he does his job, and he does it extraordinarily. But he bought the high school project on time and under budget, right after he just bought the Oak Tree project on time and under budget, with very few change orders, which is an amazing feat in itself. And he spends his tireless time here, and his dedication to Monroe is unbelievable. And I think you're very underappreciated, and so on behalf of the board, we just want to thank you for everything that you do for all of us and our children. Anyone else? We will go to the superintendent's report with Dr. Hamilton.
Before I present my actual report this evening, our director of, our supervisor of testing grants and special projects is going to provide the board with a brief overview of the grant that we received for the teacher evaluation pilot. When we get into the action items, I'll make an addendum, an amendment to some of those items, but I'll ask Mrs. O'Connell if she will present for us this evening.
I have to apologize. I have a little bit of laryngitis, so I'm going to do the best that I can, and I apologize for my ugly voice. In, I'm going to say approximately late June, or was it July? The state of New Jersey came out with a grant opportunity called Excellent Educators for New Jersey. They were awarding pilot programs for new evaluation systems. So I'm going to present to you on that. We decided as a district to apply for it. So the goals of this teacher effectiveness program are, number one, and first and foremost, is to increase student achievement. We want to, am I blocking you? Sure. Okay. And the other major purpose is to really accurately assess teacher effectiveness with a kind of a more comprehensive program. So we wanted to support ongoing improvement for educators, and this is another important point, to facilitate school and district collaborative cultures. So this would mean we would really be working with teachers. It wouldn't be the administration just saying, "Here's our new evaluation system. This is what you have to do." It's really creating a whole team, and I'll show you that. Getting feedback so adjustments can be made, and to actively engage district educators and stakeholders in shaping the development and implementation of the evaluation system. And then it's also to collaborate with other districts who would get this award. I'm so sorry. So, you know, one of the big things is obviously, what is the benefit to Monroe? Basically, the biggest benefit is hopefully to improve our student results by having more highly effective teachers. It's an opportunity to identify and recognize the greatness in classrooms, and develop and support teachers who need a little bit more assistance so that they can become better teachers. Also, to engage educators and other stakeholders in shaping the evaluation system. The bottom line is, the state of New Jersey plans to come out with a statewide evaluation system for school districts in New Jersey in 2013. So this is a pilot project with 11 districts who would be working together to try and shape what this program was going to be. And then the ability to how to use pilot results, and $176,100 is obviously a nice little bonus. So I don't know if you can see this, but, and this is like a little bit of one of the controversial things about this program. It's based on teacher evaluation, 100%, of course. Student achievement, outputs of learning, would be considered 50% of the evaluation system. So we would have to design a valuation system with 50% of the total evaluation based on student achievement. 35 to 45% of that would be on student growth and state-approved tests. I'm going to, the next slide shows this a little bit better, so if you can't see it that well, don't worry about it. And then the district would do like 5% on their own, whatever kind of evaluation in terms of student achievement that they wanted. The second half of it has to do with teacher practices, practice, excuse me. And there were several different models that we could choose from, in terms of research-based, scientifically looked at programs, in terms of evaluating teachers' classroom practices, how they, you know, maybe like how they effectively question students, student engagement, things like that. That's just two of many of them. So that would be 25 to 47.5%. And then we would have to find at least one additional tool to assess our teachers' practice. I just want to go into this part because this is probably one of the most, I guess, more controversial parts. I don't know if I should say that or not. 35 to 45% would be, as I said, on student achievement. So what we would look at is, say, for example, the New Jersey Asken Gates 3 through 8 in language arts and math. Part of this pilot project would be to come up with other types of assessments that could be measurable for students in other subject areas. So those have not been created yet. We would work with other pilot districts to try and create these kinds of things so that we can measure students' achievement in every different subject area. I think I basically explained that. Some of the options for that would be performance tasks, say, for like an art class, some type of performance task, or a music class. We could use curriculum-based assessments, nationally norm tests, and student learning objectives. Now, when you look at this, one of the things we have to consider is, in grades... Now, when you look at this, one of the things we have to consider is in grades 1 and 2, we use New Jersey Pass test, and that's not really a nationally-normed test that we would have to look at, looking at something else. And we've had some discussions anyway about like whether NJ Pass is the best test that we can be using. So we would look at some other options and things like that, but we would have the year to look at it. Districts will develop school-wide measures, but that basically says the same thing. So what we looked at in terms of developing this grant, or I looked at, or I guess we did, but when I wrote it, we chose, we looked at several different models. There's Charlotte Danielson model, but we really came up with this company called Learning Sciences International that also works with Charlotte Danielson, but really also one of their good models is Dr. Robert Marzano. Actually, Barbara, if you just look on the floor, you can just show those books, if you don't mind. Those are a few of Marzano's books. They're based on the Art and Science of Teaching framework, and I put the resources in the end, so if you want to look at any of those kinds of things. He is very, very well-known, and has a very, very comprehensive model in terms of measuring teacher effectiveness. So this just explains a little bit of his model. It monitors and supports the implementation of research-based strategies in the classroom. I'm so sorry. It identifies key strategies that are revealed through research. He has been researching for many, many, many years in terms of effective teaching. It's also ways to maximize student learning. And here's another key thing. I think right now, in our observation systems and the way we evaluate teachers, it's very individualized, but you know, one principal may do one thing, another supervisor may do another thing. It's very, very general. This would provide a very common language across the board, K through 12, for effective teaching, what it looks like, what it is. And this would, the other nice thing is, this Learning Sciences company that we would be working with on this proposal would really allow us to customize what works for Monroe Township. So it's not to say to speak, I think Newark is one of the people who were awarded this. It's not to say that we have to do the exact same things as Newark. We're not Newark. We're a much, very, much different district from Newark. I can't think of any of the other names that came up, but we can customize this the way we want to customize it for Monroe. So the teacher practice components include research-based, valid and reliable, all of that kind of stuff that we always talk about. And we would collect evidence on basically five different things. The learning environment that the students are in, the teacher's instructional practice, planning and preparation, how the teacher plans and prepares their lessons. It also includes a component of self-reflection, where the teacher really needs to go back and look at how they're teaching. Hopefully, we will look at some teachers even videotaping themselves and kind of going over and seeing what worked, what didn't work, those kinds of things. And then, of course, their professional responsibilities and collaborations. Then the rating systems in this Marzano Casual Teacher Evaluation Model have five different levels of performance for teachers: innovating, applying, developing, beginning, or not using. The other thing I particularly like about this model is that it provides a differentiated process between novice and veteran teachers. So the expectation should not be that like a novice teacher who's been teaching two years should be expected not to do the same types of things that say somebody's been teaching 20 years. So this is about teacher growth, no matter what year you're in. You know, you start out in the beginning, you're learning certain things. We expect you to have a few more mistakes and a few more bumps along the road. By the time you've been teaching 20 years, you've got to get it straight, so to speak. So what would this whole proposal include? Basically, we would have to provide a minimum of three days, and I think it's more like six days in the grant, of training for our evaluators. That would be all evaluators, supervisors, principals, vice principals, anybody who evaluates a teacher. Would also include frequent moderate, excuse me, frequent monitoring for accuracy of those evaluations. So different people would come in and see, how accurate is that evaluation? Ongoing coaching for the evaluators to assure interator of reliability. And also, understanding and use in this, it's called the INTESTS model, which you could Google or whatever. It's basically an inter, many, many states got together, along with like Pearson, ETS, different groups, and they created these core teaching standards that measure effective teaching. So we would use that model. That model fits right in line with the Marzano model. And use of effective evaluation and observation strategies and requirements. So now, for the teachers, it would also include two full days of training. The way we worked it out for our district is that the two, we would select, and I'll go over this more towards the end, we would kind of figure out who we wanted as teacher leaders. It would be a collaborative process. I'll talk about that at the very end. So I think we budgeted for in this about 30. We can change that and tweak that. When you write a grant, you write in certain things, and you always know that some things are going to be adapted and changed. It's not going to look exactly like it does in the draft. But we have certain teacher leaders in each and every building at each grade level, and they would be our leaders to be trained in that. And then what we would look at as a cost savings, because initially looking at this, and Dr. Hamilton and I talked about this, it looked like if we trained every teacher in our staff in year one and had to cover for substitutes and things like that, it would be quite expensive. So we look at, it's one of the benefits of Monroe, is our professional development model includes Train the Trainers. I think we have over, what, 70 people? Do you have any idea? Jeff would probably know how many people.
Close to 100.
Close to 100 people who have taken this course called Train the Trainers. And Train the Trainers really effectively teaches you how to be an effective trainer and turnkey the training so that everybody has the information on that. So that's a tremendous cost savings to our district. For non-tenured teachers, we would, and this is exactly, pretty much, what we have now is three formal observations with pre- and post-conferences for our non-tenured teachers. What we don't necessarily have in writing is two informal observations, but I believe that supervisors and principals can do informal observations as they choose to do. It's just not like mandated like this. In this particular grant, the state of New Jersey says this is the minimum that you have to do. For tenured teachers, it would include two formal observations with pre- and post-conference, and two informal observations. Also, a summative evaluation with a mutually-developed, PDP is a Professional Development Plan, so that they could plan for what they want to improve for the next year. Annual, teachers would have to self-assess themselves, self, do a self-assessment each year. And then we would follow up with professional development in specific areas of weaknesses for our staff members. So the district's commitment is basically to provide resources such as the time that would be involved in terms of meetings, the training, et cetera. Those would be the resources we needed, other than meeting space, you know, some of the logistics like that, creating a process for full supportive evaluators and teachers. We would employ a web-based system of evaluation management. We already use New Jersey SMART, which is a statewide information system, and we also use a system called Genesis that we collect different student data on. So that's pretty much in place already. We would create a district advisory committee, as I mentioned before, I'm not sure I did mention that before, for input and support, and that would be one of our kickoff things. And also, we need to develop an additional measure for teacher practice. So I'm not sure you can really see this, so I'm just going to just kind of read it to you really clearly, the timelines for this. This grant is from September 1st, 2011 now, through September 30th, 2012. So it's only a one-year pilot, and after that, as I said, the state of New Jersey plans to take all this information and create a statewide evaluation system. So it's coming down the pike anyway. So we basically, in this grant, have four reporting periods. If you think of them sort of like a quarter, you know, there's reporting period 1, 2, 3, 4. So the first thing, obviously, is we would have a district stakeholder advisory committee who would really look at what our current evaluation system is, what kind of changes and what kinds of things we need to tweak. That would be reporting period 1. Excuse me. We would meet with this company, Learning Sciences, who is the company that we chose to help us implement the Marzano model. They have something also called Eye Observation, which is an online program. So say a teacher is there, I used the effective questioning example before. Say a teacher is observed, and it comes up, you know, you're really not like doing higher-order questioning with your students or something like that. They can actually, this Eye Observation has like a video the teacher can just click on and watch and see that being implemented in the classroom. So they have real-life examples. That would, we would meet with them in the beginning and help create our own customized templates and tools for what works in our district. Then we would have the training for the evaluators. We would, obviously, all the way down the road, we have to collaborate with Department Ed and the other districts to help create those growth measures for the untested, non-tested subjects. We need to create and disseminate interest inventories and recommendation forms to identify and recruit instructional leaders and coaches. And I think this is really important, because honestly, when we're writing a grant, we just kind of like say, okay, this teacher will be, do this, and this teacher will do that, and you just kind of stick names in there. However, we're not going to just like choose people at an administrative level. I think it's really important that we develop some kind of surveys and interest things so that makes sure that it's the right teacher and the right fit for creating the proper evaluation system. And so then, after the evaluators are trained, LSI would come in and train the instructional leaders. We need to update our professional development program to fit in line with this, it's called EE4 and J, Excellent Educators for New Jersey requirements. And then after we see how our teachers are doing, maybe we, we're going to have far more comprehensive data on how our teachers are performing and what skills they have in the classroom. And then we can develop our professional program, professional development programs exactly to line up with where our needs are. So we're not just saying, oh, take a course in this for no particular reason. And then, of course, there would be turnkey training for staff. So that's it. Any questions?
I have a quick question.
And I have a copy of the grant for all of you.
35% to 40% of the evaluation of the teachers are going to be on student achievement? Okay, so what happens, though, if you have a teacher who, will the evaluation on the student achievement be on students that are in that particular teacher's class?
All of those kinds of, this is why it's considered a pilot program, because it was not very clear from the state, excuse me, how they want this to be laid out. They do say in the two tested areas, so for New Jersey ASK, I assume, for example, if your child, my son was in, well, he was in second grade last year. Let's say he was in third grade last year and took NJ ASK. We would look at, the teacher would look at the incoming NJ ASK score, and then probably the outgoing one. You can't, it's going to be a little bit tricky, to be honest with you, because those NJ ASK scores don't actually come out till August, and a teacher's getting their evaluation at the end of June. So all of those logistics, the state is aware of. I went to a meeting, you know, about this whole proposal, and, you know, we know we have to work out all of those kinds of things. It's not set in stone. But they do intend to use and create a model where 50% ultimately is based on some type of student achievement. It's our opportunity to kind of like mold what we think would work best.
Because the other part of my question was, what would happen if it's, if it's, the assessment is individualized to the classroom? What happens if those kids, if the teacher is marked off as saying she isn't using it or he isn't using it, but then those kids score higher?
Well, I know you have 50/50. You're measuring two different things. I'm not sure, maybe I'm not.
No, I was just wondering, you know, how that would work out.
Yeah. And it doesn't state in the, in our grant proposal, or in the application for the grant by the state, it doesn't state, it says, you know, 35% to 45%, but it doesn't state specifically what, how much growth you expect the students to have, do you expect them to maintain? None of that was stated, and that's all part of the pilot. So I think it gives us an opportunity to say, here's what we think should happen. And we, you know, become a district that helps pilot a state model.
One of the things that I think is attractive about this grant is ultimately, the state is going to develop a new teacher evaluation tool, and we really won't get a vote on that. The pilot, however, gives us an opportunity to address some of those concerns that you point out, specifically as it relates to student achievement, for example, what happens in those areas where there may be a different criteria set, for example? What happens in an art classroom versus a math classroom in terms of how you evaluate a student? So we're hoping that we'll be able to have some influence on this process as the state develops its new tool that will be utilized in every district. The item that's on the agenda for the acceptance of this grant, I am going to hold that off until the next meeting, because I want to further engage the association, the Teachers' Association, in developing, further developing this committee that will help to develop and monitor this process, and to also make sure that we have a common language in terms of what we want to see the final product look like, to the extent that we'll be able to influence that. So the item that's listed specifically for the acceptance of this grant, I'm going to hold that off until the next meeting, and I also want the Board members to have an opportunity to review the grant in its entirety. And then the company that's under the Business Administrator's report will also be deferred until the next meeting.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Sorry. How long is the pilot program scheduled to go on, and is there any anticipation?
It's from September 1st. We were actually given a preliminary award. It's not, I mean, we were awarded this money, but it's not, we don't have the formal agreement yet from the state of New Jersey. So we're not starting until we get the formal agreement, until we decide, until we, of course, the Board takes action on it and whatnot. So that'd be September 1st. So we're already behind the eight ball, but the state is not ready yet either, so, you know, typical.
Was it a one-year thing or two-year thing?
A one-year, and then till September 30th, 2012. So a year plus the summer.
Is there any anticipation when the state is going to adopt a new evaluation process?
So they say, according to this, is in September 2012.
Okay. All right, thanks.
That's their plan.
Any questions?
Yeah, a couple of things. I know it's a great thing to be part of a pilot, because you can kind of be like sort of in a driver's seat, but the one thing we have to make sure we keep in mind is Monroe Township has a disproportionate number of kids with special needs. And I think it's going to be a very difficult challenge to manage how we're going to assess student achievement if it's 50% of a teacher's evaluation, if 100% of her students have special needs, and to be able to define growth, or achievement, or forward progress is going to be a challenge.
My recommendation on that, I mean, I've thought a lot about this personally, and I was discussing with somebody today. It could possibly mean, when you say 50%, it could mean that the teacher maintains. The state has not identified this yet, and that's what they want our districts to collaborate, and all the different districts to collaborate, and pilot, to have conversations, just like what you're saying, because they recognize there are a lot of things. How do you, how do you do an art student? You know, a gym kid, somebody has a little bit of disability, you know, I can't do that many push-ups, but, you know, am I not going to, you know, my gym teacher going to get in trouble for that? You know, so all of those kinds of things, and that's exactly what Dr. Hamilton is saying gives us an opportunity, and you're saying too, to get us in the driver's seat, to kind of say, hey, here's a red flag, here's what we need to address.
Well, with regard to special education children, most, if not all, have individual education programs, and that becomes the benchmark in which you can go and evaluate. I mean, if you have a child that is profoundly, I mean, very, very simple tasks would be, they advance to personal cleanliness, hey, that's a great achievement!
Right. Right. So those are all the, I mean, there's a lot of questions in terms of that, there definitely is. And that's why it's considered a pilot program. There will be discussions throughout the time with both Department of Ed and the other districts who are piloting these programs. You know, there's a lot of questions, and I think we should keep you informed along the way and tell you the progress that we're making in terms of that. Any further questions?
When the pilot program ends in September of 2012, when will the state adopt their evaluation?
According to what they said. Not going to tell you I'm 100% confident with what they said, because I know how it works. percent confident with what they said, because I know how it works and you probably do too. They're saying September 2012, even though this isn't ended. My guess, to be honest with you, would be that they probably will not be ready to really make a definite change until at least 2013. I mean, I just think it's going to take them some time, but, you know, I'm not the state, I can't say. Their plan is to have something implemented two thousand, September 2012. That is their plan.
Okay. Anyone else have a question?
So procedurally, we're removing?
Mr. Masters?
Superintendent Two J is being removed and Business Administrator D, is that what's being removed?
He hasn't, he hasn't said himself yet. Now, we will go with the superintendent's report.
Okay. Before we get into the personnel, um, action items, I just want to commend our principals today and our staff for an extraordinary opening, particularly with all the transitions that happened this summer. We had a very smooth opening. We had some transportation challenges at the end of the day today. We started out with a delay at the high school that had a ripple effect on the rest of the pickup and drop offs this afternoon, but nothing monumental fortunately. So I do want to acknowledge our stu, our staff for doing such an exceptional job today. Even here in the high school, kids were in class within a few minutes and moving about as though they had been here forever. So with that said, Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, I'd like to recommend that the board approve Personnel Items A through L by roll call vote.
Seven.
Mr. Chiarella and Mr. Kaufman down there, I believe?
Any comments or questions for the superintendent? Mr. Klein?
First on H. Can you explain what that is? They're going from, looks like cafeteria duty to transportation special ed?
Yes, these are some changes in paraprofessional assignments that were previously approved.
Okay, then we go to I, Department of Coordinators at the high school. Are these presently teachers that we're giving an extra assignment to?
Yes, this happens every year.
Okay. And last but not least, and K. K, K, K. Okay, I have two questions here on, on new employees. First, we have, let me do the easiest one first. Mr. Lombardi, who lives in Baldwin, New York, Baldwin, Long Island.
We're not able to talk about individual people, Mr. Klein.
Okay, but there, there are two on here. One in particular has roughly a three-hour ride each way in heavy traffic to get to our schools.
We're not able to discuss that.
Can't discuss it at all?
No.
Okay, so I can withdraw that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
All Lee teachers.
Okay, then we will have a roll call.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes, recuse myself on item J.
So noted. Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
No on K.
So noted. Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovich?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Personnel Items A through L passes.
Moving on to Board Action Items indicated as Roman numeral two under the Superintendent's Report, Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended that Items A through I. A through, right, A through K with the exception of J. Item J is being pulled until further exploration. So that's Items A through I and then K excluding J.
Ms. Antellus and Mr. Chiarella? Questions for the superintendent?
I do, if I can find where I am.
Is that Mr. Klein?
Yes, I found where I am. A, attached list of requests for staff professional, professional development. That comes down when I, when I vote. E, this platform, this new assessment system, and I saw the way it's broken down, don't we have some of those programs already for assessing the students?
Mark, that's the Core K-12. It was former, it's formerly known as Lernia.
Right.
And Lernia is no longer being endorsed by the state of New Jersey. It's actually being spoken as, as a sunset assessment system. The new assessment system will set us up directly for the 2014, 2015 assessment system. And that ties directly into New Jersey joining the Park Consortium with the new Common Core standards. And I could go into much greater detail on the intricacies of the program and the effectiveness of using formative assessment for learning and how important it is in the district.
Did we pay for Lernia?
No, it was never, no. And so what, what happened is that when the state backed off of Lernia, they then charged. They, and what they were charging was comparable to this product, but didn't do nearly as much as this new improved product did.
Okay, thank you on that. On H, I, I, HI, it is recommended for the board to approve for writing workshop training. Is that something that we do all the time? Once a year?
Yes, we are expanding it this year. This has been a multi-year implementation process.
And the last thing is, the last thing I have a question on is K. Do you explain that? The children, it's a student that's going to the children's home and it's, that's special ed and it's three hundred and four sixty per diem. Is that per day, per week?
Per day. That is per day.
Per day. And how much of that is picked up by the state?
Zip.
Thank you. I'm done.
Are there any other comments or questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovich?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through K with the exception of J passes.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Then we will go on to the Business Administrator's Report. Mr. Gorski?
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through D, with the exception of D, be approved by consent roll call.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Antellus and Mr. Chiarella? Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Gorski, Mr. Tesler?
If you can explain A a little more and the details of the signage?
A, certainly.
Thank you.
Recently, the Monroe Township Board of Education solicited quotes for directional signage at the new Monroe Township High School, this building here, you'll see them out in the hallway. By Mr. Tag's efforts and recommendation, by soliciting quotes and doing this independently as opposed to the general contractor installing these signs, we were able to save the markup and recognize cost savings. Once the job was completed, it was appreciated so much that we decided at the committee level to expand this into the Monroe Township Middle School, being that we have a campus approach to both buildings. And that would create safety and uniformity as all of the directional signages would be the same. M&amp;S Signs is the vendor. We have permission in aggregate not to go out to bid by instead having the powers within me as the qualified purchasing agent to have a resolution before the board. This is actually more disclosure than is required by law, but we chose to put it forth anyway.
Teacher signs inside the school?
Signage inside the school.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right, directional signage inside the school and the hallways and so on.
Okay, gotcha.
Anyone else? Then we will have a roll call, Mr. Gorski.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovich?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through D with the exception of D passes.
Okay, thank you very much. Board President's Report, a couple of things. One, that we had a very successful school opening, as Dr. Hamilton told you today. And even in the rain, I can't remember a last first day of school where it's rained. So that's really, I think rain has always been good luck. So if it is, we're going to have a really good year. Second, we had a very wonderful ribbon cutting opening ceremony last night for this new school. If you haven't had a chance to tour this school and see how beautiful it is, we'll have to make arrangements for you to do so because it's an absolutely gorgeous facility. And lastly, as I mentioned before, all of our committee meetings are open to the public. Our committee meetings are put on the website so that you know when they're available. And I, I don't believe they are posted now, but we're going to try to post the agendas to the meetings on the website, if possible, so that you will have an idea of what will be discussed at, at committee meetings. So at this time, we'll go to committee reports. Does anybody from the board have a committee report?
Ms. Ant, Koloponovich?
Mr. Leary?
Thank you. Last night, I had an opportunity to talk to Senator Linda Greenstein. And this was a follow-up to the meeting we had in Trenton with the State Department of Education. She has received no information. Michael has received no information. We are going to follow up with vigorous pursuit to find out what is going on. And let's bring a couple of facts to the forefront. If you recall, the Board of Education in the city of Elizabeth has been caught with the hand in the cookie jar. The president of the board, lady who's making very handsome money, has enrolled her son for reduced lunch. An assistant superintendent has enrolled their child for free lunch. Now, that's minor thievery, you think, but the reality is, when a child gets free or reduced lunch, there's a whole administrative machinery that goes into place. The free and reduced lunch program is administered by the United States Department of Agriculture, believe it or not. And it spreads out. When you get free and reduced lunch, you get increased money from the Federal Communication Commission. And the state of New Jersey says, if a child is getting free lunch, that automatically says the school district gets $5,700 in addition. If it's reduced lunch, it's $4,700. And up in the city of Elizabeth, there's whole-scale thievery. Now, Michael has been working very diligently. I talked with our auditors last night and we come up absolutely clean. We have very, very low numbers. And that may be part of the reason we're only getting $354 and some of our nearby characters are getting thousands of dollars. And I hope that the efforts of Senator Raymond Lesniak of Union County and Senator Michael Dougherty of Warren County will pursue this matter at the Senate. This system is rotten to the core.
Kathy, can I add something to that?
Is that for his committee report?
Yes, just in addition to his.
Okay.
Okay, one thing that Mr. Leary left out is, last year, there was an audit done at Camden. And Camden receives, I don't know, two hundred, two hundred million dollars from us and probably two hundred million dollars from the federal government. And when they did the audit, they found tens of millions of dollars going into the pockets of the administrators, whether it be expenses, vacations, bonuses. So you can imagine how much more theft is there, as well as Asbury Park, which they're auditing now. And I guess they're going to go through all these Title I districts. So that's just an added information, added comment.
Thank you.
And to follow up?
Mr. Leary?
Point I wanted to raise a few minutes ago when I was cut off was that this school district, if we use?
Mr. Leary, does that have to do with your committee report?
Wait for later.
I will, I will follow up.
Under, under board business.
We'll have comments later. Follow on. Go ahead.
Is there any other committee reports? Mr. Kaufman?
The Curriculum Committee actually met this evening to go over a few items. We went over some new and exciting things that are going to be happening in the math programs from K to eight. We also covered some new metrics that we're going to be using to track what we're doing in the science programs. We are also going to be changing the delivery method of the Falcon newsletter to an electronic format, which is going to save the district money, be able to turn around time for publishing. And it looks to be an exciting, exciting program. In addition, we also moved forward, we're talking about electronic books, iPad-based, working with some of the publishers that we typically get a lot of our materials from, one of the biggest contractors is Pearson. So we are aggressively moving forward with the iPad deployment and all the things that we can do to lessen the load on our students, so no more carrying of books. A lot of the materials that we're going to be having for students to be using are all going to be electronically based in the effort to not only be green, but to be much more cost-effective and make optimum use of the iPad. So I would recommend a lot of people who are, have new faces I've seen tonight, keep coming, keep watching Channel 28. We're going to be having some pretty incredible demonstrations on the technologies that we're going to be using here in the high school and then moving that forward and filtering it down into the elementary level, so stay tuned.
Any questions for curriculum? Any other board committee meetings? Okay, seeing?
Okay, I have. I thought that was committee. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Seeing no more committee meetings reports, we will go to other board of education business. Mr. Tesler?
Just to be brief, community announcement, the Monroe Ed Foundation, back in June, was scheduling and planning a fundraiser, a softball game fundraiser, which is a revenge match. It's the teachers versus police after the teachers beat them in a basketball game this winter. Originally, it was a fundraiser for the education foundation, but after the, after the, after Hurricane Irene affected so many residents in Monroe, we decided to have the fundraiser but donate all that money to the victims of the hurricane. So the softball game is this Friday. Cross your fingers, I think the weather's going to be good. It's going to be at 6:30 PM at the softball field, the girls' softball field next to the construction office. Donation's five dollars or whatever. We'll also be collecting any clothing and financial donations as well, so it'll be a good time and root for your favorite teacher or police officer.
Ms. Antellus?
Just want to know that a couple of businesses in town donated an iPad that will be raffling off at the game. And the generosity of the businesses in town has been overwhelming so far. The game hasn't even started and we've gotten $1,400. So the community's really coming together on this. It's a great thing to see and Monroe's a great town. So hope to see you all out there and no rain.
Mr. Chiarella?
I just, I just wanted to just quickly, just thank the township and everybody here for coming out today, but just the amazing, amazing things that I've been seeing with just the sense of community and support for the people that have had all, you know, all the troubles with the storm and the, unless you've been over there and looked at what's going on, you can't even imagine how devastating it really is. And, you know, I just want to say that our town grew, you know, quickly, relatively quickly. You know, my family has been in this town for, for about a hundred years. And sometimes that, that quick growth made me think anyway that, you know, that we were lacking that sense of cohesiveness and community. That sometimes happens with a, when they're, when you have a community that's, that's maybe small or been around for a long time. But I could tell you something that the people in this town, after, who came out and, and reached out to people and showed their love and support, proved me wrong, you know, I really, they really did teach me that this is a community and this is a great community. And I just, I can't say enough, I can't even describe it. And I just, I can't say enough, I can't even describe it in words, the way I feel based upon what I saw. And I want to thank also the people that came out tonight. I do agree with the people who spoke regarding the pay-to-participate and what you'd like to see be done. I agree with that. I just, and I think that that's something that the board should be mindful of going forward. There's a lot of things that are changing, a lot of things that are happening with this as a result of the storm. And I know we have some things in place for people in need, but there's also a lot of things that happen, I think, with pride and things like that, where people might not come forward to say that they're needy. So I think it's important that we understand that and maybe go a step further to be able to help them out the best we can. And thank you.
Mr. Braverman?
Through you, Madam President, I wonder if you can ask the Finance Committee to review the pay-for-play as it appears and as it affects the budget. And I'd like them to report back to the Board by next meeting, which is September 29th. Now, if you-
Gladly accepted.
I believe the meeting is the 21st?
Well, 21st then. If you can't do that, I'll make it a motion.
I can do that. I'll have them, I believe, Mr. Leary, there'll be a finance meeting before that?
We will have one. Have no fears. And we will review in depth.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Braverman. It's hard to see down there. Mr. Klein?
This is going to be a long one. First thing I want to say is, I feel for the families that were involved in the floods. I had an opportunity not to work as much as Ira has and some of the other members, but to go down and bring donations of clothing and food. First day, many residents were brought up to our community, the Regency, to our clubhouse. And all of our residents came out with food and products that were needed to keep the people, I can't say happy, but keep them fed, and tried to make it a little more peaceful. I do want to thank Mayor Pucci, Council President Tamburo, and definitely, definitely, Councilman Michael Liebowitz. I believe Councilman Liebowitz orchestrated a big meeting there, and I was not able to make it because I was at zoning board meeting. And I guess that's what spearheaded the residents getting together, finding out what's needed. And I thought the little bit that I saw of it was very good. Now let's get down to meat and potatoes. I'm glad to see many people here that I have never seen at other meetings. And I wish we had many more that would show up at our meetings, to hear what goes on, to voice their opinions. You have to understand something, that when we get elected to this position, it's not only to help the children, but it's also to help the taxpayers. And I'll get into more of that. The one thing I do want to bring up is, as I've spoken many times, Renaissance won their bid, or their claim, to get a conversion from a PRC, which is an adult community, to a family community. I had to recuse myself because I had testified as a resident against Hovnanian that led to Hovnanian losing and having to come back with a counteroffer. I was not able to testify, therefore, it was approved. That will be another 130 homes, where the minimum of two children will equate to 260 more children in our school system. Property taxes for new homes built during the last 12 years had increases of 800 to over $1,000 for this coming year, mainly because of our school budget. I see people agreeing. Older residents cannot sell their homes. They're being priced out of their homes. They cannot sell their homes because of the taxes. When you go into Clearbrook, you can buy a home there now for 65 to $100,000. Concordia, whose homes were selling at close to 300,000, the homes now are 100 to 125,000. And Renaissance, I understand, is from 20,000?
Not Renaissance.
Oh, I said Renaissance. Rossmore.
We had one sell for $11,000 for 1,043 square feet.
So you have to understand, with the way our property taxes are going, and the lack of money that we get from the state, and those of you who have attended all these meetings, and I see we have PTA presidents here, know what my cry has been since I've been on the Board. And that was to contact the state, write letters, do something. If it comes that we have to go to Trenton to protest, then that's what it's going to be. There is no way that we should be getting 300 and some-odd dollars this coming year per student and have everything else on the backs of the taxpayer. A couple of things. Edison and Woodbridge were in a newspaper. They cut out zero-period busing. As far as pay-to-play goes, if we reinstated the other two, then I believe this should be reinstated also. I'm going to go into the grants first, before I hit you with the hardball. You know, I read in the papers, and I see grants going to Edison, who receives a hell of a lot more money than we get. And they had a grant last year for two labs and four classrooms for $900,000 from the state as a gift. South River needed a roof on one of their schools or two of their schools. They received $300,000 as a gift. Mind you, they get a lot more money than we do. Woodbridge, who gets a hell of a lot more than we do, just received $500,000 for roofs on their buildings. Michael, how much money did we get to put the roofs on our buildings? Nothing. Zero. Oh, go ahead, answer.
Specifically for roofs, we received nothing.
Nothing, right.
However, for this high school, we did receive a $15 million school-
Yeah, that was on the first referendum.
Correct.
And we received nothing on the second referendum. And just to add insult to injury, New Brunswick built a high school called the Taj Mahal for $187 million, paid for totally by the state.
$94,000 per seat. This school costs $69,000 per seat, a difference of $25,000 per seat.
Now-
Thank you, Mr. Leary.
Now we get into the property taxes. It's getting to a point now, now I have people that recognize me from the Board or from the zoning Board, that stop me in the market, or they'll stop me. The other day was in front of a bagel shop. And a lot of the older people say, wait a minute. We have no children in the schools, why should we pay property taxes? And my answer is, that when my kids went to school, the elder people paid for it. But it was a lot cheaper then. In East Brunswick, which was a highly-rated school, our taxes would go up 0.03 to 0.05, maybe 0.06 every year. You could live with that. But we cannot live with double digits every year. This past year was 0.021. The year before was probably 0.12. All I know is, ever since the cut was made in school aid, or I should say, the formula was developed because of the Abbott decision, our taxes are going up $500 to $600 every year, and this was the top this year. It has to be controlled. You have other states that will give a discount to people over 65 for as much as 50% because the taxes are getting so high. I was never for that. I am for it now. My suggestion is, and this is something we probably have to talk about, is because of what it costs to educate our children, because we don't get our fair share from the state, I'm recommending that we work out a program where people, our residents over 65, receive a 25% deduction in the school part of their property taxes. That's what I would push for. As far as all these expenditures, you have to understand something. We had to cut $1 million out of the budget. The Council's been very good to us, and I saw the reaction from our PTA presidents. The cut was supposed to help in property taxes. Basically, everything that we cut, now, we did cut $1,500,000 before that, so let's get that understood. The additional $1 million that we cut, and the programs that we all went along with when they met with the Council, are all being reinstated, except for pay-to-play. So if we've already done all those, put pay-to-play in. Don't let the people have to pay for pay-to-play. But cuts have to come from somewhere. And I have no idea what the negotiations were with the teachers' union. I know there was a settlement. We know nothing about it. We're going to see what that is. It may lead to where the Council has been very, very good to us, that they may come out next year and say, you want to know something? What you said you can cut, you reinstated. So therefore, instead of having to cut $1 million, what happens if they decide to say, okay, Board of Ed, I want you to cut 4 to 5 million? What do we do then? So we're in a tough spot. You have people that are paying very high taxes, and it hurts. People are not making the money they were making before. And I happen to think, my own opinion, that there are certain things or certain programs that we have that are sufficient that we could lay back a couple of years without having to improve, and use the money where we have to improve. That's my opinion. Let me see if there's anything else here. Over 65, any full taxes? And I believe I have everything. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Mr. Leary?
I'd like to amplify on a couple of points that Mark made. The Constitution of the State of New Jersey says, thorough and efficient. We have heard that for 40 years. It also says equality of treatment. I call that parity.
Right.
You take the $7.8 billion the state gives in aid, with the 1.2 million children, and you run the numbers out, and it says, every child should be worth 6,406 bucks. Now, we get $354 after the magnificent increment of $800,000. We are standing right now at 5.6% of the $36 million we would be getting on a truly parity basis. So that is the problem. We are like people fighting on the Titanic, trying to get off. I mean, there are school districts that are making stupendous amounts of money, they are paying nothing to the state, and it's coming from the suburbs.
Amen.
Mr. Tesler?
I'll be brief, two quick comments, I guess, on pay-to-play. We decided to bring that back to the Finance Committee, which I'm part of, so I'm sure we will discuss it and come with a resolution. And I have a lot of friends out here, so I promise you, we will discuss the pay-to-play at the Finance Committee, so come back at the next meeting, and you can find out the result of that. And for full disclosure, I do have a daughter that participates in two cheerleading teams in the club. Thank you.
To answer Mr. Klein and Mr. Leary, in regard to the state funding, I don't think there is anybody sitting in this table, or probably in the audience, who does not disagree with you. I think every one of us here has been trying to work with the state, talk to the state, write letters to the state. I know I have, I know many of the other board members have, I know the administration has, and we're going to keep going until something happens.
We've been stiffed. Michael, Ken Hamilton, I went down, saw the Assistant Commissioner for Finance. Dr. Hamilton laid out a very persuasive case why the 43 miles of Monroe are unique, why we have to have busing and lots of other things. And then we went and started to look at where are we? And we looked at comparables. Places like Ulrich, right across the creek, they get $4,500 per student. Now, Senator Greenstein asked them to start providing us with information. Based on my conversation of last night, she has received zip, and I've talked to Michael, and they have. They're stonewalling us. Well, we're going to do something about it.
Kathy, just one other thing, please.
Mr. Klein, quickly.
Those of you who read the Home News Tribune would have seen an article that I wrote that was printed today concerning charter schools. There was a gentleman about a week and a half ago that is part of a charter school system, and now wants to have charter schools in top-performing neighborhoods, or I should say, top-performing districts. Namely, he was talking about Plainsboro, Princeton, and I forgot what the other two were, East Windsor, West Windsor, and so on. What happens with a charter school is, let's take East Brunswick. And the excuse that was used was that they're going to teach Hebrew. I'm Jewish. I went to a Hebrew school for six years. My parents paid for it. My friend is Chinese. He sent his kids to a Chinese school. That's what they call it, to learn the language. In East Brunswick's case, 108 children left their system. The law states that it's either 80% or 85% of the tuition goes to the charter school. So in their case, I think they're somewhere around, let's say, $16,000 a student. 85, 80 to 85% of that goes to the charter school. When you look at what they receive from the state and state aid, they're getting a little over $2,000 per student. So now, out of that money that's going to the charter school, only $2,000 of that is from the state. All the rest is from the property taxes. Now, with 108 students going out, can you get rid of teachers? No, you still need the same teachers. Can you close a building? No, you still need the same building. Can you get rid of janitors? No. So everything remains the same, except that they wound up losing somewhere around $1,400,000. And my thinking is, and this are only my thoughts, is that the charter school system in the inner cities, the Abbott District and the Title I schools, would probably work. And they're getting enough money to do it. But what's happening is, they're still failing. They're not successful, as the public schools were not successful. Because unless the parents or the guardians are involved, these kids are going to fail. So what I think these people that are in the charter school business, and that's exactly what it is, it's a business, want to go into the good school districts, because then they can say, hey, we have a charter school, and look how well they do. Well, they would have done as well in our school. You hear about the technology that our curriculum and technology department moved to, 21st century. All these new programs that we add are for the 21st century. This guy, Mr. Block, I think his name was, wrote that all these successful schools allow status quo and do not move towards the 21st century. And that's what led to my response. So if you do have the Home News, you will read what my response was to them. And it's a danger, because if it happens here, and we're only getting 300 and some-odd dollars a student, and let's say we're at $15,000 a year, that money's coming out of all your pockets, and that's got to be stopped. People who want a private-school environment, let them send their kids to schools like Rutgers Prep and pay the prices there. But the taxpayers cannot afford to back these charter schools. Thanks.
Is there any other board business? Okay, seeing none. Closed session. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subject, Superintendent's evaluation. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the matter has been resolved. Need a motion in a second. Mr. Chiarella? Ms. Antellas, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? We will move into closed session.
I'm glad people stayed.
We were watching the last board meeting.
Okay. What are we up to?
Okay, the meeting of the Board of Education will now reconvene back into public session. And at this time, we will go to number 12 on the agenda, the public forum. Again, anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
95 Blossom Way. My first question this evening deals with the Superintendent's Report and the subject area coordinators for the high school. Could I know- Could I note their main responsibilities as coordinators in those areas?
Sure. I can take that. Several years ago, the board abolished the concept of department chairs and created a teacher-leader initiative in the district. So these people are responsible for acting as a liaison between teachers and district administrators, and they coordinate department efforts related to curriculum, support, supplies, materials, things of that sort.
Are they responsible for classroom observations at all?
No.
Okay. Thank you. My second question deals with the Business Administrators' Report, and it's the BASC. The contract was awarded to this company. Could I ask, there's mention of 300 students there. Can any student K to 12, or K to whatever age, be admitted into this program? Is there any qualifications for that?
The Before and After School Care Program is an independent organization that provides these services, independent of the school district. However, the school district lends and offers some school facilities for their purpose in which, a contract which is forthcoming, will disclose the annual fee. This all came out of the Building Grounds Transportation Committee leading up to this board report. Can anybody participate? I believe they can.
And I believe you've had experience with this company in the past?
Yes.
Are the employees of this company screened, criminal background checked, as would the teachers in the buildings?
I believe they are, yes.
Okay. The last question, or the last comment I have, is, any number of meetings, we have heard how Monroe Township has, to want a better word, been victimized by the state as far as money is concerned. I think it'd be really helpful if those people involved in this would take the state formula and show us how and where in that formula Monroe Township has been victimized, and compare it with, say, a township such as Old Bridge, as has been mentioned, that benefited, let's see, unduly benefited from this formula.
No, Mr. Gorsky will answer this one.
Okay, fine.
Dr. Hamilton, Mr. Leary as Finance Chair, and I, along with our board counsel, had a meeting with the Department of Education recently. And we had inquired specifically why there was such a disparity amongst districts within the same district factor group. The only expression that the state gave us was that Monroe Township has a very high property wealth per pupil metric, and also income per pupil metric. Those two factors are hindering our distribution of fair state aid. These are lagging indicators. They're based on a couple of years ago's data. And we specifically showed statistical data, how Old Bridge, for example, has a similar district factor group, yet receives a much greater multiple of Monroe. And the state had promised us a comparative analysis between the districts that we chose. Old Bridge was one of them. And they were going to give more specifics on why the money went to Old Bridge, why they get several thousand dollars per pupil, and Monroe only receives 300. But the main focus of the formula which drives this is, again, property wealth per pupil and income per pupil. Dr. Hamilton and I presented a very strong, compelling argument that Monroe should be reviewed a little outside of the cookie-cutter approach with property wealth per pupil, because, you know, when you compare homes that are selling in regency with very high property values, some as high as, you know, $400, $600,000, with no children contributing to the school, it skews those metrics to our disadvantage. And they appreciated that argument. And also, we presented how Monroe also has to spend a lot of money for courtesy busing, as it would be imprudent and improper for us to have students walking in highways without sidewalks.
It's also important to point out that the district factor group that we were using to show comparisons, that designation was never intended to be used for that comparative purpose. The district factor groups were designed specifically for student achievement and was not an indicator of commonalities related to wealth and the ability to pay by taxpayers for school districts. So that district factor group indicator is misappropriately applied, inappropriately applied in this instance.
And one final statement. Why is this important? Why does the public keep hearing about this matter? It's really quite simple. It all funnels down to your tax rate. Because the more money we receive in state aid does not mean we're going to go ahead and appropriate more money and spend more money. It will offset the tax rate, which would greatly reduce the amount of burden for the community. We had projected that had we received the average amount of state aid, that others within our same district factor group, and I agree with Dr. Hamilton, that's not used in the state model, but it is still a good analytical categorization, there would have been no tax increase this year. So that's how significant this matter is. And that's why we'll continue to fight for more funding.
Ms. Kowponiewicz.
Mr. Leary?
At that meeting, Senator Greenstein specifically asked the Assistant Commissioner to provide the information about Old Bridge, North Brunswick, and South Plainfield, which are FG over, K-12, over 3,500 students. We haven't seen nothing. And that's why, and I had a conversation with her last night, right over there, and she's not happy. And I know that Michael has not received anything, and we're going to, our council was with us, and we're going to pursue this matter vigorously.
Kathy?
Thank you. I think you've answered my question.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, can you make this quick?
Short and sweet.
Okay.
Those of you that have attended these meetings know, for the last upwards of two years to three years, I personally have sent letters to the New Jersey Department of Education, Chief Justice Rabner, and I use that term loosely, and Governor Christie, basically supplying him with the information that Mr. Leary developed. He's great with numbers. And I did get one answer from Christie. I've also spoken up at town hall meetings, at least three town hall meetings. Two were about the financing, the funding that we're not getting. And the one in Monroe, we had plenty of people complaining about it. And I brought up the bit about the conversion, the Salo Act, or Sowlow Act, whatever the hell it is, which ran out the end of August. But I just want you to understand, and the letter just went out to Christie last week or the week before, what hurts us is we have so many retirement communities that the taxes they pay can go to the schools without putting any weight on the schools. Why should we have to suffer for that? And what I said was, you have Hovnanian, who are going to build 126 homes. That was converted from 326 homes that were PRCs. So you have 126 there at two kids per. Now you have another 130 with Renaissance. You have, not Renaissance, with Renaissance properties. And then you have two other developments going on. So by the time you turn around, we're going to have 500 more students. So, yeah, they're going to be paying taxes until we have a revaluation. They'll be paying taxes 12,000, 13,000 a year. And if they have two kids going to school, and we're only getting $328 a student from the government, where's that money coming from? It's the property taxes. And when this gentleman asks, you know, how do they come up with these figures? Man, I'd love, I'm not a mathematician. He is. And you can sit down with all the instructions they give you. There is no way that any formula would equate to us receiving under $400 a student. Impossible.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak?
Lara Libros Getz. I guess a couple of things. First, I wanted to tell you, I was at the meeting for the victims of the hurricane, and on a really good note, the principal from Mill Lake, I don't know her name.
Dr. Borberry.
She was absolutely wonderful. And I don't, I think, I were you there that night too?
Yes.
But she got up and spoke with such authority, and made the people of the town feel so welcomed. And she was wonderful. So, you know what? With all the negatives being spoken, you need to hear the positives, and she should be commended. So on that end, I think she really was well-spoken, and she told the people of the town about if there was problems busing your children, what the law was, and how she opened up the school. So, you know, she really should be commended. Pay-to-play, I sent an email to all of you. I did receive a response from Dr. Hamilton. I did not receive a response from anybody else on the board, which I kind of am a little upset about. I thought someone from the board who, it's an elected position, should have responded to me. I have a daughter in high school who is down to play three sports. My taxes went up, I don't know, $600, $700, probably close to, and then 300 plus $50 for the technology fee. I think it's a lot to ask the people. And especially with what's going on now in the town, I would rather give money elsewhere than that. I think that you really need to look at that. I think people are really upset about it. The other question I have is, are we going to see any tax relief from the trailers? I see they're being taken out. I don't know that anyone asked that question.
Mr. Gorsky?
The trailer accounts in the budget, in aggregate, is about $2 million a year. It's about $1.5 million of rentals and about $500,000 of utilities related to these very inefficient units. This year, for 2011, 2012, we were able to budget less trailers. However, there was a removal fee, okay, that was built into the original contract many years ago, that requires, or eats up, most of the savings this year. In 2012, 2013, we are projecting to save about 95% of that appropriation, with only a few trailers remaining. So the majority of that would be relieved in the budget.
So we should see that next year as well?
Yes.
Anyone else from the public?
Phil Levy, 92 Kings Mill Road. I think maybe I'm a little bit in the minority, being in the senior development and getting a $900 raise, all school taxes. It would seem to me that when the seniors of the community of Monroe voted down the budget, they said they didn't like the budget. And when the council sat down with the board and agreed to take off $1.5 million from the budget, which I think was far too little, it was agreed to. For the board to then spend the $800,000 that we got from the state, putting back the busing for zero, putting back some other things that the council had cut out, was the wrong thing to do. That money was meant for tax relief. And that's exactly how it should be used. When the township votes against a budget, that means they don't like it. And when you go and override what the people want and what the council said you should do, I think it's incorrect for this board to do that. And it only gets, the people that do come out and vote, and most of them are seniors, they come out and vote it down again. And next time, I think you're going to be faced with a council that's not going to be too happy with what this board did. And they're going to look to cut three, four, or maybe five million dollars from your budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public?
Cheryl Arminio, 9 Nathaniel Street. How about that closed session resolution?
The closed session resolution is in regard to the Superintendent's Evaluation. We shared the board's evaluation with the Superintendent. The Superintendent, at this time, is taking that evaluation back with him, and he will come to the board in a future meeting to have another discussion on the evaluation. So at this time, there is no resolution to the resolution.
Thank you. Oh, you know, just on what Mr. Levy said, inasmuch as I believe that you should reinstate the $165,000 for the children and sports, and I don't think what I'm next going to say is the contradiction to that, but when was the last time that the Board of Education actually sent back funds for tax relief?
Ms. Kowponiewicz. We sent back $600,000 for the Oak Tree School in two increments. It was originally authorized, $26,600,000. The construction closed out at $26 million, and it was $600,000 was returned to the Township of Monroe.
And when was that? What year was that?
Three years ago.
Okay. And that even amount to one cent per taxpayer? What, I thought it had to be $750,000 before it accounted for one cent per taxpayer?
That was approximately correct. At the time, it was about $700,000. So it was a fraction of a cent, almost a cent.
A fraction of a cent.
Almost a cent.
I think if you take Mr. Levy's point, since the economy is getting worse, the spending should be cut down, not necessarily cut down, but we should be careful about the spending. I attended, I believe it was a finance meeting in January, and there were funds that were found that hadn't been used for a specific target. And I can bring that information to the next meeting. But at that meeting, it was decided to find a way to spend it and not to bring it back to the town, not to bring it back to the taxpayers. And that was at a meeting in January of 2011. So I think the board doesn't have a sense. I know I've heard board members say, it's only $20. It's only, well, it's only $20 for some people. It's a lot more money for others. So responsible spending, I think, is what people are looking for. I don't think anyone wants to, no one wants the children to suffer, but I think that the taxpayers should be respected and not be dismissed. And sometimes the money should actually go to tax relief. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Seeing no one, our next scheduled public Board of Education meeting will be on Wednesday, September 21, 2011, 7 o'clock PM at the high school. A motion to adjourn?
Who was the first?
Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Antellus, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Meeting is adjourned.